To the United States of America, may we be the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come to silence? Roll call.
Counselor Crum.
Present.
Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Coats.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Sturts.
Here.
All members are present, we have a form.
Motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Allen and second by Counselor Coats. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Sir.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Five a's, one abstain, motion carries.
Names of individuals wishing to address counsel. Anybody? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports, safety and code.
Oh, we just had the meeting. Yeah, we just had the meeting. That's not the other. Yeah, we had a meeting just a few minutes ago and Chief Torbett spoke to us about Lexipol. Lexipol is a company that produces policies and procedures for police departments. Is that fair, Chief?
Police and fire department.
Police and fire. And we're looking, Chief wanted Safety and Code to consider bringing forth the recommendation that we use Lexipol for the maintenance of the police department's policies and procedures. And Donnie and I gave it much consideration and we figure it's a good time-saving effort because writing policies and procedures are quite time-consuming. So, tonight, we're recommending that we authorize the police department to use Lexipol.
All right. The motion to accept that committee?
I want the motion to accept that recommendation.
Sounds like a bad.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Matthews. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum? Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
Personnel committee.
Uh, we actually had three meetings, two on Thursday and then one this morning. The two on Thursday were, first meeting that we had was in regards to the health insurance and wage compensation plan for the police unions. And Tom was here, Jamie was here, basically outlined the discussions that the union negotiations came up with and some of the changes that were put into place. You have in front of you some of the changes. Jamie, I don't know if you want to talk about real quickly the difference in the health insurance. The big thing to me was the aggregate versus the, what was the other word?
Embedded.
Yes. I don't know if you want to talk about that real quick.
Okay, the high deductible health insurance plan that we offer, in 2013, the deductible was 1,500 for a single, 3,000 for a family. And it was an aggregate plan, which meant you paid your deductible, then you went down to zero, then you paid your out-of-pocket next month. This year, we're switching to a $2,500 single, $5,000 family, but it is an embedded plan, so your total deductible paid goes towards your out-of-pocket. So your total liability could be 10,000, whereas in 2012, or 2013 this year, if you're a family, your total could have potentially been 12,000. So we've lowered the total liability, but increased the deductible. But that was really...
That was, thanks for not making it quite now. So, there were a couple of changes there for that. The wage increase offered is 2% in 2014 and then 1.5% in 2015. One of the things that I think is substantial, that I appreciated knowing that the cost to the city for a 1% increase in wages is $33,000. So, after Tom had presented and Chief Torbett was in there, the committee did make the recommendation to accept the changes or the union contract that they had come up with for police. And I'm sure people might have questions after that report. Anybody?
So, everybody's happy?
I think everybody is satisfied.
So, we're switching to a $5,000 family deductible? For a family plan, a $5,000 deductible?
We're switching to a $5,000.
So, in 2014, each family, a family plan will have a $5,000 deductible?
Yes.
After they meet the deductible, is it 100% coverage?
It's 80% to the 10,000 max.
It's 20, Shane, it's 2,500 per person and 5,000 per family.
I see.
Before, under the aggregate, the only time the 1,500 came into play was for a single. It didn't matter if you had one person or five people in your family, you had to get the $3,000 deductible before you got to the 2,000.
So, for somebody to get to 100% coverage, you have to have a really bad health care.
Yes.
One other observation is, Shane, is that with that high deductible plan, the employees would be entitled to eligible for a $2,000 contribution the first year to the HSA account and 2,250 in the second year to help offset the increase in the...
So, that's the max they could contribute to their HSA?
No, that's what the city will contribute. They can contribute up to whatever the statutory limit is, which I think is like 5,500, something like that.
So, the city is dumping money into the employee HSA at what rate?
2,000 for 2,014, 2,250 for 2,015.
And that's for a family plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, for every member.
Whether they're single plan or family plan?
Yeah, yeah. And also, the city will continue to offer the PPO plan, a slightly higher deductible rate, but that plan is still in place as well. So, there's still the two plans.
Was there any thought to varying amount dumped into their HSA depending if they're single or family plans?
I think we really discussed that.
One reason why I ask is because the county operates that way. A single plan, you get so much in your HSA, and a family plan, you get so much in your HSA, which sort of levels the playing field depending, because you can see a big benefit from being a single plan.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
All right.
Something we can certainly take into account, and appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
So, do we want to move on to the next report, or do we want to, motion to accept this report?
We can take them all one at a time. Some motion to accept the first report. I'd like to make the motion to accept the first report.
I was talking to that.
Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Allen. Is there any discussion? Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
The second report, we had a meeting that same morning with the non-union employees. And again, Tom and Jamie explained what the union contract negotiated and each, there were employee representatives from each of the non-union departments present. They were given the opportunity, Jamie had passed out a couple of sheets, and Tom had passed out a couple of sheets, they were given the opportunity to ask questions. They came up with some very good questions, things that they would have liked us to address. One of the issues was, they would like to see an increase in their uniform allowance to go from 450 to 500 a year. And so, we had agreed that that was...
Very quick to report.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I just say? Oh, I gave them 500.
Straight.
350 to 400. I was just feeling generous, it's the holiday time. So, we had agreed that, we thought that that was probably something that the city could do and after about, I don't know, I think it was three hours, we heard back from all the individual representatives who expressed their approval of what was presented to them. And so, they are going to be getting the same package that the union had negotiated for the police. So, I think that's about it. Unless anybody has anything additional to add.
On the uniform allowance decrease from 350 to 400, that's a year, not a month?
Correct, per year.
So, I mean...
Yeah, that would show photos on here. That'd be a different... You would have some well-adressed employees.
Okay, motion to accept that report. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sturts and second by Counselor Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, and then the meeting that we had this morning was, the personnel committee just met to discuss what the non-union employees had come back with and again, approved the recommendation that, I guess the only change would be, there was, do you want to explain the dental provision?
Sure. In the current 147.08, I think, which deals with the insurance benefits, there's a provision which permits an employee to, who has taken coverage under the high deductible plan to request a reimbursement of the $250 for dental expenses. And so, the question was what to do with that moving forward. And I think the proposal by Doug and then the committee has agreed to, I think, to keep that $250 reimbursement capability for the first year, 2014, but then to eliminate in 2015 because of deductible, which is fairly generous, or the, I'm sorry, the contribution by the city, which is fairly generous in 2000, then goes up to 2,250. So, the long story short is that the current reimbursement provision would apply in 2014, but then not apply in 2015.
Any questions on the other report? Motion to amend the benefit provisions of the PPO and the HDHP medical insurance plans and wage compensation plan.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Allen. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
Moving on to department head reports. David?
Good evening. I had a very good meeting with Michael Novikoff with Ohio Development Services Agency last Tuesday. He came up to monitor our office on 2011 allocation program grant that our office had administered before my time. In that meeting, though, we talked a little bit about the downtown revitalization application that was submitted earlier this year, which unfortunately, we didn't get the funding for. I had talked to Mr. Novikoff about that and asked him, you know, how the application looked and everything. He informed us that it looked really good, templates there. Some of the projects, though, we're looking for more of a community-oriented, something that the whole community as a whole is going to benefit from. One of the things that I had mentioned earlier in the air was in the target area, downtown target area, ADA compliance with all the sidewalks. I think that would be a good, kind of getting the snowball going project to maybe kind of focus on for the next application here. He seemed to agree with a project along those lines, but all in all, just the application did look good, the template was there, just kind of pinpoint some other projects that we could focus on. With that being said, I came across a news article where Wapakoneta's downtown, there's a Wapakoneta partnership. I would suspect it's probably go line in line with our downtown Waseon Pride and Preservation. Where Wapakoneta City Council had kind of committed for a couple of years, for the long term, focusing on appropriating some money for some downtown development. Something along those lines, committing that and showing that to the state of Ohio, I think would help also with maybe solidifying some of those funds in the future. It just shows some, you know, just that commitment to our downtown, that we're here to help and improve and encourage that sort of development in that targeted area. There's some other information that he shared, too, is a little bit more technical, but I think those two things, maybe finding a good project and committing to some funds may be a good idea to think about, something to think about in the future.
I have a question, David, that grant, does that require match?
There is a match to that, yes.
So, if there were some money set aside for that, that could be considered a match?
That's not how I look at this. I mean, this would be separate, kind of our own entity where we're looking into securing some funds ourselves. I mean, it could be, I'd have to look at the guidelines to make sure, but possibly.
All right, thank you. Chief?
We've been working on several projects. Our main one was the Lexipol one, which we just talked about, getting that up and running. All the chapters are over to Tom McWaters, most of them have been sent back for several revisions, but we are all ready to publish that now that we have your approval to go ahead with it full steam. Also, we were working with Healthy Choices Caring Communities Coalition to do an enforcement effort the night before Thanksgiving, along with the Lights for Lives. That was a, put out by the District One Ohio State Highway Patrol in the 6th County area. Worked on that for the last couple of days. Saw a significant traffic enforcement in the area, I'm sure you saw several cars up and above during that time. We had 14 traffic stops over the 48-hour period, made three misdemeanor arrests, one drug arrest, handled five crashes, and did eight enforcement stops on top of that. So, our guys were rather busy during that time. And that's about it? We had a very good turnout for the parade on Saturday and it was very well-attended and had no issues other than the sound system.
Yeah, except for the sound system.
Thanks, Chief. Tom?
Last week, the Board of Zoning Appeals met and approved an action that cleared the way for the Dollar General store to go ahead and get started concerning the number of parking lots that they were going to have. So, we cleared that, which also opened it up, I checked our code, we hadn't updated that for a number of years, so I'm going to look into what other communities are doing. I think we need to... The problem was, we wanted one spot for 200 square feet of space and it looked up. I mean, their national average, they want 45 spots, our code said they needed 63, so we had a meeting, so I'll be looking at that. And I had correspondence, evidently Habitat for Humanity does have a client that would like to build in town, so, and they contacted Shane, too, so we've done actively looking to see if we can find a spot to build.
All right, thank you. Dennis?
Calling council's attention to some, a couple of new resolutions on the agenda for this evening. Resolution 2013-36 is to allow the mayor to enter into agreement with Arcadis Engineering Firm to do the bidding and, excuse me, bidding in an award phase of redoing the primary clarifiers at the water reclamation plant. 2013-37 is, again, for Arcadis to develop an emergency action plan, an operation and maintenance manual for the water treatment plant regarding our up-ground reservoirs. The agenda is listed as underground, but it's up-ground as you know. Also, this week, December 5th, I believe, the large elevated water tank on Shute Avenue, or just off of Shute Avenue, will be drained for inspection. Has to find out exactly what we need to do to incorporate into our specifications to have the thing repainted inside now, hopefully this next summer. We still have plenty of water without that tank in service. With it in service, we have about 2 million gallons or a little over 2 days' supply. Without it, we have about a day and a third. Folks may notice some rusty water here and there. It does not mean it is unsafe to use, but let us know about it if that occurs and we'll try to flush hydrants and stuff to remedy the situation. But that should be back in service by the 10th. It'll be off for roughly five days by the time they get it disinfected and put back in service.
When did you say they were going to drain out?
They'll begin draining it on the 4th and it'll be inspected on the 5th.
Dennis, the tree on Elm and Shute that we were going to decorate for Christmas, I haven't seen it lit up. Is it decorated or...
We're working on that today.
I believe that, yeah, they had, we ordered lights to the tune of almost $1,000 for that tree.
I asked David if he had lights for that, he said he did.
He had them coming.
He didn't say coming, he said he had lights.
Well, they came out of Colorado. LED.
So important.
Low voltage.
Nice, you're creative. Okay, Jamie?
I passed out the 2014 budget at Council of the Bowl last Monday for your review. I also provided the November figures and the annual tax report, which said we're a little over 2% over last year. Even I also had a meeting scheduled on Thursday for opening loan purposes to get everybody a time to check.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Well, two projects that I've been working primarily on are the Lexipol, review of Lexipol stuff, which the chief has mentioned, and also then trying to complete and finish up the work on the insurance packages for the employees. You have before you a whole plethora of ordinances and resolutions dealing with one form of insurance or another, just to give you a cheat sheet or a short list, it can get a little confusing. Ordinances 2013, 2013, 13, and 14 deal with the wages and insurance for the non-union employees. In particular, 13 deals with the wages, just wages. Ordinance 14 of this year deals with the insurance and the uniform change for the non-union, for the public works folks. 2000, the resolutions, just the three of them that I referenced, 33 deals with the renewal of the contract with PEP for the casualty and liability insurance that you need to do each year. 34 authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Medical Mutual, that's so we can contract with Medical Mutual, sign the contract so we can begin enrolling folks. And then 2013-35 is actually, would authorize the mayor to enter into the Memorandums of Understanding with the three unions, which deals with the wage increase and the insurance changes. I'd be very grateful, I'd be happy to try to address them, but that's all.
All right, moving on. First reading. Ordinance 2013-12, annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014. First reading.
Motion made by Counselor Sturts and second by Counselor Allen. Is there any discussion? Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, ordinance 2013-12 passes and is now in effect.
Ordinance 2013-13, amending section 148.11 and 148.12 with the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon.
First reading.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Coats and second by Counselor Crum. Is there any discussion? Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, ordinance 2013-13 passes on first reading.
Ordinance 2013-14, amending section 147.08 and section 147.20 of the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon.
First reading. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Coats. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, ordinance 2013-14 passes on first reading.
Resolution 2013-33, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with the public entitlement pool for casualty, liability, fire, and property damage insurance and declare an emergency. So, sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Sturts and second by Counselor Allen. Is there any discussion?
This is to suspend the rules, right, and declare emergency?
Yeah.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Coats. Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, resolution 2013-33 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2013-34, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Medical Mutual for health insurance coverage and declare emergency. So move. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Allen and second by Counselor Matthews. Is there any discussion? Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Crum. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2013-34 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2013-35, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city's Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Command Officers, Patrol Officers, and Records Technicians, and Full-Time Dispatchers, unions, and declare emergency.
Motion to suspend the rule, declare emergency?
Second. Motion made by Councilor Matthews and second by Councilor Sturts. Is there any discussion? Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Crum and second by Councilor Coats. Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2013-35 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2013-36, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Arcadis for engineering services for the design, bidding, and construction related to that primary settling tank and flowca, whatever that word is.
Flowcation? Is that right, Dennis?
Okay, good. Clarifying replacement of the city's water reclamation plant.
Whoever put that in there does not get the $50 gift certificate.
Was that you, Tom?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Allen. Is there any discussion? Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2013-36 passes on first reading.
Resolution 2013-37, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Arcadis for development of an emergency action plan and operations, maintenance, and inspection manual for the city's underground raw water reservoirs. So move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Allen and second by Councilor Matthews. Is there any discussion? Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2013-37 passes on first reading.
There are no second or third readings of legislation, so on to new business. Motion to accept the 2014 schedule of council meetings.
Jeff and Karen, you guys want to take care of this?
I think I'll be here for Sunday.
Have that first September meeting on Monday.
I'd make a motion to accept the schedule.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Matthews. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
I feel like Soggy's.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Motion to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all the bills possible before December 31st, 2013?
Is that just the city's or others?
Second. Motion made by Councilor Sturts and second by Councilor Crum. Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Motion to accept the reappointment of Shane Chamberlain and Fred Allen to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Board for the return of January 1st, 14 to December 31st, 14.
So move. Second. Motion made by Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Crum. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Did they make it already about here?
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Did you have a meeting last year? Okay, motion to give each full-time employee in all contracted department heads a $50 chamber conference gift certificate. So move.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Matthews and second by Councilor Coats. Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
Sure.
Councilor Sturts?
Yeah.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Motion to authorize the mayor to enter agreement with Jill Hodginake pertaining to the removal of a dead ash tree on her property located at 420 North Shoop Avenue. Definitely, yes. Make motion.
Definitely, second.
Motion made by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Matthews. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Matthews?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Allen?
No. No.
Okay, and then Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, motion carries.
Okay, we've been through all the motions. I'd like to reinforce what the chief said, it was a great Christmas parade we had last Saturday night. Weather was perfect, attendance was super. It seemed like a lot bigger crowd than last year, but it was just dynamite. It's great to see a big turnout of people, as well as all the people bringing the floats in, so keep up the good work. Thank you.[1761.21]